Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Ashley, you want to take the roll call?
Mike Hopson.
Here.
Michelle Blythe.
Here.
James Schwedie.
Here.
Marilyn Early.
Here.
Jessica Stickles.
Here.
Deborah Nelson.
Here.
John Fanny.
Here.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a special guest this evening, so we're going to have Chief Hots, Chief Hovis from the South County Fire District, I believe. Is he on?
Yes.
Oh, there is. Hi, Chief.
Hi, how are you doing? Chief Hots is an associate, but I'm H-O-V-I-S. Thank you. Mayor, I just, and Council, I just wanted to take an opportunity tonight and just really say thank you for putting me on the agenda. I know you have a busy night tonight, so I'll try to keep my comments fairly brief. Some of you I've had the pleasure of meeting already. I serve on the Civil Service Commission for the city. But for the record, my name's Thad Hovis, and I reside at 17518, 81st Drive Northeast in Arlington. I also serve as interim Fire Chief of South County Fire, and South County Fire is a regional fire authority formed in 2017. We serve a 50-square-mile area in southwest Snohomish County, in what was Snohomish County Fire District 1, and the Lynwood Fire Department. Really, tonight, I just wanted to say thank you and extend sincere thanks on behalf of South County Fire and the communities that we serve for all the collaboration and hard work that we've done together during the COVID-19 pandemic. South County Fire and Arlington Fire, along with seven other fire departments, really got together as really one agency, not thinking about the patches that we wear, the names of our departments, the communities we serve. Really got together as one team to serve the communities of Snohomish County. I've been in the fire service for 24 years, and I've got to know a lot of your team. And I have the benefit of working in or living in the city. And through the work with the Civil Service Commission, I've got to know some of your staff better than I did before. And I work with Chief Krasky and Deputy Chief Dickerson on regional issues that face the county. But when COVID came to Snohomish County, our fire department was the one that transported the first patient. And we knew at that time that we couldn't do it by ourselves, that we needed to work together as a team. And this was going to spread across our county, our state, our region, and across our country. And just like anything in the fire service, we work together well. And when we have a challenge in front of us, we look at it as an opportunity, one, to work together even more strongly than we've done in the past. So, we got together at our South County Fire headquarters, had a common incident action plan, brought together Unified Fire Operations Center, serving over 80% of our population. And I always say it's never a bad time to say thanks to someone and tell people they're doing a good job. And it's never a bad time to tell the electeds about their team. But this has been an opportunity for me to get to know your senior leadership team better than I have in the past, and that our organizations work well together, not just during COVID-19, when the public really needs us, when we have to get together to work to get PPE to our employees, to keep them safe and keep our public safe. So, my message tonight is really just want to thank you. And as a resident of the city, I want to say how proud I am of the work that Arlington Fire has done for our city. And I can relate to you, from South County Fire's perspective, how well your team works with ours and others in the county. So, I just wanted to say thank you and just have an opportunity to introduce myself to those that I haven't met before in working with council. And that really concludes my comments.
Thank you, Chief. We'd also like to thank you for the leadership. If there was a time for regionalization and people to come together for the common good of everybody, this pandemic was it. So, thank you very much.
Definitely. Thank you.
Any council have any comments before we let the chief go?
It's wonderful to see you again, Thad, and working with you on the Civil Service Commission. I know how hard you work and how passionate, how invested you are in what you do. So, thank you for your service.
That, we miss you on civil service. I'm happy to see you on council. But thank you for saying, yeah, I know. Thank you for saying that. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thanks.
Thank you again, Chief.
All right, thank you. Well, have a good night and thank you so much. Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
We didn't have any members of the public that wish to speak except for during the public hearing, so we don't have any members now.
Then I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the June 15th and the June 22nd, 2020 council meetings. Consists of accounts payables, approval of EFT payments, and claims checks number 99925 through 100095 dated June 16th, 2020 through July 6th, 2020 for the amount of $758,248.25, as well as the memorandum of understanding with IAFF for Captain Paramedic Pay Assignment.
Second question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move into our public hearing section. We have two public hearings this evening. And we'll start with the first one, which is the Development Agreement for Smart Cap 188th Development. Mark.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. The first item for public hearing tonight is the Smart Cap 188th Development Agreement. This was to recognize the construction of 63rd Avenue from the Smart Cap property located on 188th, which would build three-quarter roadway improvements on the 63rd alignment down to the improvements that were done with the Dantral project on 180th. This also includes this wire Coca-Cola property, their additional property, not the one that faces 59th, but builds the improvements in front of their property also. And so, this is just to acknowledge Smart Cap agreed to build this roadway alignment, and we've agreed as a city to acknowledge that and to allow traffic mitigation fees to be utilized towards that construction.
Thank you, Mark. Ashley, did we have any members of the public that wish to speak on this item this evening?
We did not.
Okay. So, having no members of the public, we'll close the public meeting. And are there any questions or comments from council?
I had one. You know the property on the other side of the trailer park? And I noticed the road just goes to Smart Cap's property. Is there any chance whoever is building there would continue that road out to 188th?
So, the ultimate plan is to have this be a connection between 188th and SR 531, 172nd. We do have right-of-way from both the Vander Yacht propane and the HCI building, which you inquired about last at the workshop. So, that's one that's directly on 188th. So, we do have right-of-way in order to bring a reduced roadway section down to tie into this. But the ultimate belt-out is going to require acquisition of additional right-of-way to get a 60-foot right-of-way through there. So, but as these properties build out in there, we do have the ability to at least get a reduced roadway section to 188th.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
If they're willing to.
Right. No questions or other comments from the council. Do you mind if we act on these this evening?
I think we should.
Good to you, Jessica.
Yep, may I see that? So, first, I'd like to move to approve the Development Agreement for Smart Cap 188th Street Development, QOZB LLC and Manufacturing Industrial Project, and authorize the mayor to sign it, subject to final review by the city attorney.
Second. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So, we'll move to the next Development Agreement, which is the Corner 9 Properties. Mark. Oh, got my screen.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You shut corners.
So, this Development Agreement is for the Gilman Walk at Country Charm. It'll be a townhome development. This will provide for an extension of Gilman Avenue through the townhome development. It will terminate on a piece of property that's going to be dedicated by the developer to the city of Arlington in a public parking lot. And from the public parking lot, there will be a paved access down to the bottom of the slope down to the Country Charm Park site. I provided you an additional map based on the questions that came out of the workshop. And it's been annotated in order to provide some answers to those questions. I'll go to that, so I can just kind of walk through this with you. So, if you look at this map, a couple of things are on here. So, there's been a change on the Development Agreement. We've added in Kathy Dion's property, which is on the corner of Alcazar and Gilman. And that's delineated there by the text in that corner. So, that is entered contract by the developer, but that is contingent upon the rezone, the neighborhood commercial that's currently zoned on this split zone property. So, as we continue down the roadway alignment, you'll see where we come into Track Q. That will be where the public park, parking is going to be created. And that will be the terminus of Gilman Avenue. Then you can see the alignment of the paved access road that goes down the slope down to the bottom of the hill, pardon me. And from that point, it will, the paved access will terminate there. But there will be a crush rock access that comes around the corner and continues out to what is currently the Manure Lagoon. That will become the stormwater treatment pond detention area for the plant. And so, there will be an access road all the way out to that location. The other item I wanted to point out is the Track P, which is nine-plus acres that is budding the Country Charm Park site in the lowlands. So, if anyone's ever been there, you'll notice that if you're down there walking around, you actually are walking across property that is not owned by the city currently on the west end of the park site. So, this dedication will enable us to control all of the property on the low end of the park site. So, we'll have full access and ownership of that property envelope. So, that being said, are there any other questions about the Corner 9 Properties Development Agreement?
Mark, let's open up the public comment for the public hearing first, okay?
Sorry.
We have two people who'd like to speak to the council this evening. First, we have Anna Nelson.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name again is Anna Nelson. I work with Land and Gentry Homes and Communities. One of our development entities is Corner 9 Properties LLC. And we've been working with the city on plans for development of this site for a couple of years now and have here an examiner approval that we received in February. And as a result of that approval, we did work with the city on the design of the extension of East Gilman. Think this is going to end up being a great complement to the Country Charm Farm Park. So, look forward to getting your support for the Development Agreement. Thank you. Do you need an address?
No, I don't. Thank you. And we also have Brian Gentry. Brian, would you like to speak?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Just, I guess it's nice to be the last one to speak. Everyone's already said it all, so I don't have to say too much. But, no, I just wanted to compliment Mark and his collaborative work in trying to come up with how we creatively take this upland piece of the country, of the old Country Charm Dairy, and really find a way to connect it in a meaningful way with, you know, with the old town grid down to the lowland areas there. And I really do think we came up with a way of just, you know, working well together and taking this opportunity to come up with, you know, the city getting what they need or were desiring, and for us kind of finding ways that we can find ways to build a quality neighborhood in a way that we think will be, meet the needs for folks that currently live or want to live in Arlington and call it home. So, anyway, I just want to say thank you again. Appreciate Mayor and council for just giving this some consideration tonight.
Thank you both for speaking this evening. So, without any other public comment, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. And does the council have any questions or comments for Mark? Deborah.
And Jan.
Comment. I want to say thank you, Mark and Anna and Brian, for working together on this. I'm a neighbor. I don't live very far from where this is going to happen, and I'm excited for this addition. It's been a goal ever since I've been on council for nine years now to see this happen at Country Charm. So, I'm really excited for this end of town to have those amenities and that access. And I look forward to seeing the neighborhood being built, too. I'm sure it's going to be lovely and a great addition. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Deborah. Jan, did you have your hand up, too?
Yes. Just clarification, Mark. On the map, it shows the Gilman Avenue roadway improvement in the yellow. And then, north of that, it has East Gilman Avenue. So, is the yellow part going to be the new road and then East Gilman's not going to be there? How is that going to work? Is there two roadways?
So, are you looking at the map that has all the green open space on it, Jan? Or are you looking at the first one from?
Well, it's the very first map, and there's a long, wider yellow strip all the way down to the parking lot. And then, north of that, it shows East Gilman Avenue. So, I was just curious as to if East Gilman's going to go away and the yellow's going to be a wider road, or?
No, it was the depiction of that line on there from GIS that kind of misplaced where the roadway's going.
Okay.
So, that's why I provided you with the other map, which actually shows you the alignment correctly.
Okay, sorry.
East Gilman will go along that alignment that you're seeing here.
Okay.
There was an old, there was an old access road that's shown on the aerial, and that's what you're really seeing on there. But the roadway has shifted a little bit to the southeast of that alignment. But if you look at that one, you'll see that the word divides the lots for the unit lot subdivision.
Okay.
So, that is East Gilman on that rendition that goes all the way down and ends at that public parking lot.
Okay. From the parking lot to drive down to Country Charm, is that going to be two-lane, or is it just going to be one lane?
It will be a single lane down.
Okay.
But the vehicle access will not occur beyond that parking lot. So, the vehicle access is only there for maintenance purposes and to provide it on a limited basis. If we were to rent out the campsites down there, we would have to put a guard lock or something on the gate. So, there will be a control gate on that parking lot, so the vehicles cannot go down beyond the parking lot. So, all vehicles are supposed to park in that public parking lot. And then, access through pedestrian walkway down that access road.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I should have scrolled down further. I just stopped at the one map.
Yeah, not a problem at all.
Are there any other questions or comments? Don?
Just one quick question, Mark. Looking at the map there where you were just talking about the Track P, the nine-point-some acres there, that little piece to the west of that, are we going to be land-locking somebody there, or?
That is owned by another partner, another landowner that actually owns just that little piece. It's really landlocked already. There is no access to it. I know that they've approached the city in the past about trying to have us purchase that, but it didn't provide us any benefit at all. So, we really weren't interested in purchasing that property. So.
Okay, yeah.
But, yeah, we are not land-locking it simply because there is no, there is no access to it already. So.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to say I want to commend you, Mark, and the staff for working with Land and Gentry on finding solutions to make Country Charm Farm Park a place that potentially will have uses because it'll now have access, something that we've wanted for quite a while. So.
Great. Atlanta Gentry has been a wonderful work with, and they're going to have a very quality housing product. And this is something that we've really been promoting, is to have townhomes within the city of Arlington because it's one of the housing types that we're lacking. And so, we're really excited to see this project move forward. And Anna and Brian have been great to work with as a collaborative team.
With more people looking like they're going to be telecommuting in the future, townhomes will be a welcomed addition to our housing stock here. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, Jessica.
Okay. I move to approve the Development Agreement for Corner 9 Properties LLC, a residential townhome project known as Gilman Walk at Country Charm, and authorize the mayor to sign it, subject to final review by the city attorney.
Second question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Anna and Brian.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of council.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, so we'll move into our new business this evening. And first up is the bid award to hold services for the new water source test wells. Jim Kelly.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council members. This item before you tonight is to award a contract for exploratory well drilling, testing, and monitoring to hold services. The city of Arlington has been pursuing new water sources to obtain a long-term water for the community of Arlington. We have looked all over the city and have identified several places where we'd like to put some exploratory test wells in and around the Stillowamish River. We went to public bid on this project, and Hold Services is the qualified low bidder, and we are recommending to award contract to Hold Services in the amount of $208,088.79.
And I noticed that you improved the history section of the cab to show the council the total amount budgeted and what's been expended each year, starting in 2019 on this project.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions or comments for Jim?
Okay. Here, so. All right. So, Madam Mayor, I move to award the exploratory drilling, testing, and monitoring well installation project to Holt Services Incorporated in the amount of $208,088.79, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract pending final review by the city attorney.
Second. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. And next up is the geotechnical services contract with Pacific Groundwater Group for the test well drilling. Jim.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council members. The city, our engineering staff is very well-qualified. However, we need some specialists to help out with the hydrogeologic exploration of test wells to make sure that we have good water quality, long-term water source, as well as a high-productivity wells wherever we select to drill. To that extent, we reached out to Pacific Groundwater Group, a consulting firm who has worked with the city in the past to talk about providing hydrogeologic services for the test well project. We discussed the scope and fee, and attached to this council agenda bill is the final scope and fee that we are recommending that we contract into PGG for services to support our test well drilling.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Jim on this one? Jan? Jan, you're still muted.
Yeah, I just unmuted. So, when you show in history the budget and everything, so the one we just passed is included in this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
It's not included in that little summary. That little summary is what the project budget is and where we are today with the project budget.
Right. But it includes both of them. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No.
Okay. So, I move to approve the contract with Pacific Groundwater Group in the amount of $159,419 for geotechnical and hydrogeological services associated with the drilling and installation of five-potable water test wells, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract pending final approval by the city attorney.
Second.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Deborah. That was a long motion to read. Next up is the construction management contract with KBA for the 204th 77th Avenue Roundabout Project.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council members. The 204th and 77th Roundabout Project is a very important project for Arlington. We currently have a lot of traffic that goes through this intersection. And as you are aware, we've had quite a few accidents in this, at this intersection. The city obtained grant funding from the Transportation Improvement Board to move forward with the design and construction of this project. We completed the design, and we're now ready to go to construction. We bid the project. We have re-construction moving into the site. What we need is, we need a construction management firm to provide full-time oversight of this project as well as filling out all of the forms that we have to provide back to the Transportation Improvement Board. We have worked with, we've reviewed several consultants for this project, and KBA rose to the top of that list. We've worked with KBA in the past. We sat down with them. We negotiated a scope of work and fee, which is attached to this council agenda bill, and we are recommending that we contract with KBA in the amount of $183,000 to provide construction management services for the 204th Roundabout Project.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions or comments for Jim on this item? Saw that the signs did go up.
Yeah, I saw that.
Not so high this time.
Just one quick question. So, Jim, all the businesses around there, you are taking handouts to them, to the managers?
And letters, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think this one is yours, Jan.
Sorry, didn't know that. Just a second. Just a second. Well, that's not moving. Okay. I moved to approve the contract with KBA Incorporated for Construction Management Services in the amount of $183,000 for the 204th 77th Street Roundabout Project and authorized the mayor to sign the contract pending final approval by the city attorney.
Second question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously, Jim.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So our next item is the resolution to extend emergency waiver of utility late fees and suspension of water shut offs until the governor's phase four of reopening.
Oh. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is really an extension of an existing resolution we have in place. Council has approved a resolution for economic relief by waiving utility late fees and suspending shut offs. This, the current resolution in place was, was already scheduled to expire. However, the governor's office has extended that proclamation at the state level. This new resolution just modifies the current one to match what the state is recommending. Also note that with some guidance from the governor's office, we are working on kind of a customer service recovery plan to get people back current on that as we move out of, out of this. So that would be coming forward to you presumably in the near future.
So any questions for Paul on this one?
Pretty straightforward. Okay, I moved to approve the resolution extending the utility late fee and shut off waiver and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Second.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have a presentation for the council that you had asked for, which is a review of our police policies and our HR hiring policies for the police department. And it's going to be led this evening by Chief Ventura and HR Director James Treffey.
Hey, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. If you have a TV or you follow social media, you probably noticed there's a lot going on in the world. And there's been a lot of discussion around social justice and criminal justice reform. And so I was asked to speak tonight about how the Arlington Police Department fits in with regards to community policing, police policy and accountability. So with the assistance of James, we'll be given a little bit of a presentation. I will try to keep it succinct as possible. And I did leave some time at the end for questions. However, you're welcome to jump in with questions, but if you want to jot them down and wait till the end, I will stay here as long as needed to answer any questions that I can. But with that said, for, for Arlington Police Department, many of these conversations go back to when I was appointed the deputy chief in 2014 under Public Safety Director Bruce Stedman. We knew both internally and externally then that our business model needed to change. And at that time, I couldn't agree more. And that's why I left the frontline leadership position I was in at the time to take on the role as the lead law enforcement officer here with the department. So tonight, I'd like to share with you what we have done to change how we used to do business to where we are today, thanks largely in support to the mayor, the council, our employees and the community. It may be somewhat of a review for many of you, but it may also be new to some of our newer council members. I can say that as I was compiling some of this data, I kind of surprised myself because when you're dealing with it on a day-to-day basis, you kind of take for granted, going back and looking backwards, how far we've really come in such a short amount of time. So as we go to the first slide, I'd like to give you a disclaimer that I may be talking longer during some parts than others. And this first slide captures a lot. And so you'll be looking at this slide a little bit longer than the rest. And I appreciate, I'm no Dave Krasky, so I think the slide is probably better than looking at me.
You can look that way if you want to.
Camera. Yeah. So I will say that in 2014, we began having regular dialogues with the community about all aspects of our departments and community policing. Some of you may recall this started out with the All In Campaign that focused on partnering with businesses to reduce crime rates. And it quickly became inclusive of citizen and neighborhood groups as well, ultimately becoming known as the Crime Prevention League. There was a significant amount of conversation with our businesses and community members during that time that included debunking stereotypes and preconceived ideals surrounding causes of crime, drugs and homelessness. It became clear that we needed to expand the scope, expand the scope of these conversations. It was at this time that we transitioned from the All In Crime Prevention League campaigns into what became known as Conversation with Cops. And I'll be honest, we borrowed this idea from the Coffee with Cops concept. But we wanted to change the format to not limit ourselves to just being at coffee houses. We wanted to meet with the community where they were and we based conversations on cops on a model that would get us out of the coffee shops. And it was actually recognized on a federal level by the, the cops program, the federal program that gave us a grant to hire two more police officers based on the fact that we were trying to build trust within the community. So at the time, we were meeting with HOAs, we met with schools, businesses, houses of worship, civic organizations, nonprofits, clubs, sports teams. We would meet with any citizen group that would host us. And we rotated as many officers through these meetings as we could. And we never sent them in with an agenda. It was, we did that so we would keep the conversations authentic. We let the community lead the conversations and ask questions. And we tried to keep it as human as possible. Sometimes it led to uncomfortable conversations for the police and the citizens, but we could agree that it was always real. Over the last six years, we'd actually have done hundreds of these meetings. And when I say hundreds, I mean literally hundreds. So many in fact, that it was actually noticed in Washington DC. And in 2016, we were invited to the White House during President Obama's term. And we were actually asked to help or consult on his 21st century policing initiative. It was quite an opportunity. And while visiting the White House, we got to consult with other law enforcement leaders, community leaders, psychologists, sociologists, researchers and experts from all across the country. And we came back inspired at our own department to see further ways that we could transform our agency towards better community engagement. Some of these changes that we instituted within the department included expanding transparency. And we increased training in areas such as implicit bias, crisis intervention and de-escalation. We did a complete overhaul of our department policy that was largely assembled at that time by years and years for different administrations, kind of a hodgepodge of policy. Last been updated about two and three. Moved over to professional policy that is written by legal object matter experts that would be legally defensible and included real-time updates regarding laws and best practices that do frequently change. And I'll talk a little bit more about the policy in a few minutes. We began to open our doors to the public in ways that we hadn't before. We increased our ride-alongs to the public and encouraged citizens to come out and see what was going on in their communities. We also started including citizens on our hiring panels when we weren't to hire officers so they could be part of that process and give feedback on who they thought would be a good fit within our community. And we still try to include citizens in that practice as much as we can. Unfortunately, COVID has slowed us down a little bit there. But we had our SRO program that began focusing on bridging the gap in racial injustice through our outreach. We were participating in school programs such as the Arlington Drug Awareness Coalition. SROs were teaching classes or teaching classroom subjects such as criminal justice, constitutional law. Our current School Resource Officer did a music outreach program, reaching out to kids. And they participated in the Stronger Together programs through the school. Regionally, the Arlington Police Department has been a representative on the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, which is an advisory board at the Denny Juvenile Justice Center working to build a more equitable youth justice system. For the last three years, APD has been the law enforcement representative for WASPIC, which is the Washington Sheriff's and Police Chiefs representing the entire state for the Washington State Supreme Court Gender and Justice Commission's Domestic Violence Work Group, specifically addressing racial issues and reporting back to our legislature. In 2017, we did a strategic planning session involving a diverse strategic planning committee that was representing the Arlington Police Department, the city of Arlington. It included council members, community stakeholders. And it reassessed and reaffirmed our department's philosophy, vision, mission and values. Additionally, we came up with 32 individual recommendations to strengthen our organization based on the strategic planning. And to date, we have fully implemented or are in the process of implementing 24 out of those 32 recommendations, which is pretty significant. And I included a summary overview and a packet that you should have received today. In August of 2019, Arlington Police Department participated in the No Place for Hate Community March and Rally at Legion Park. And on June 6, we participated in the Stronger Together Arlington Community Forum, which provided an avenue to talk about racial injustice. And on June 12, we participated in the Civil Rights Demonstration March that occurred at Legion Park. And then more recently, as in August, or I'm sorry, October of 2019, the council authorized a budget amendment that would allow Arlington Police Department to obtain a virtual training simulator to train and test for law enforcement officers in rural world, judgmental use of force training scenarios and provide an in-depth look into human performance. The demands of law enforcement to make critical decisions in tense, uncertain and rapidly evolving situations require that human performance aspect of cognitive neuroscience and human physiology are taken into account as part of the police training methodology. So the scenario will provide scenarios, the simulator will provide scenarios that are designed to teach critical concepts such as presence, communication, verbal and non-verbal cues, de-escalation, less lethal and other responses to resistance. Our plan was to incorporate this training platform into the new impound building with a defensive tactics room. And we were hoping to have a temporary location set up while we were building the impound building. And again, COVID has kind of stopped us. But the fact that we're moving in that direction with the council's approval says that I think we're ahead of the curve and what we're seeing in other areas of the nation. So to be specific, these conversations never end, the training never stops. And we are consistently making adjustments to carry out these changes and accomplish the best practices in community policing and with our partnerships. So the next slide is kind of talks about our crime data over the, over this last five-year period. And I think this is a result of, I think you can directly attribute some of these results to some of the steps we've taken here at the department. On the right-hand side of the screen, you're looking at our call volume, how it's increased over the last five years, 19% in the last five years. To 2019, we were at 29,000 incidents for us, which was a 9% increase over the previous year. But you can see that our traffic enforcement was up or DUI enforcement was up. Our burglaries were down, our robberies were down, overall theft was down and our vehicle reports were down. But just wanted to give a quick snapshot of when we invest in the department. I think you can see tangible results. To kind of jump into the hiring process, this slide kind of demonstrates what the typical hiring process would be for the city, where you would post a position, you review applications, you interview for the position. You have somebody that you like, you check the references. We conduct a Washington State Patrol basic background check. And if everything comes back, we, we're good to hire them. When you look at the next slide, it's the police hiring process. You'd see that we're probably tripled the number of steps almost in the process. And so the hiring process for a police officer is quite entailed and there's a reason for that. At first, when you're trying to hire an officer off the street, the first thing you have to do as that prospective officer is you go in and you take an aptitude test. If you pass the basic aptitude test, then you immediately would move on to a physical test. And then if you pass the physical test, your score is ranked. And then we, as an employer, would be able to pull the basic score. The physical test is a pass or fail where the aptitude test, we're looking at anything above 70%. But typically, we'd like to hire closer to the 80% or higher when, when possible. The candidates, the higher scoring candidates are invited to come in for an oral board interview. And this is where we've used citizens in the past to help participate in the process. But these candidates are all given the same list of questions and then they're ranked according to how well they did on their interview. And then we combine, we combine the previous test scores in a formula with their placement on that oral board. And we compile a list of potential applicants in an eligibility list. That list would go on to civil service, which some of you are familiar with. They would certify that list. And then based upon such, I would be provided as the chief, a list of potential candidates. And we will work on a rule of five. And the rule of five, meaning that if I had one position open, I could interview the top five candidates and hire or make a recommendation for hire of anybody in that top five candidate list. If we make an offer of an employment, we do so in a conditional offer. And this is different than what most employers do. Law enforcement is unique in the fact that law enforcement is the only employer in Washington State that can compel somebody to do a polygraph as part of the testing process. So in order to not take advantage of that, the courts have basically ruled, we'll allow you to do that, but we need to know that you're serious about hiring the people. So a conditional offer basically tells the candidate that assuming that you can pass the background and the other steps, including the polygraph, the psychological and the medical, that we intend to hire you, assuming there's nothing in your background. But moving forward, if they accept the conditional offer, we begin the background investigation. And this is an intensive background investigation. The candidates for signing waivers basically that we can pry into any part of their life and we're not afraid to look at any part of their life. We will travel out of state to look at documents. And the reason we will do that is a lot of employers will answer some basic questions on the phone or via email or over a facsimile. But there's a lot of records that they will not allow you to make copies of or photograph that you can only see in person. And it seems quite intense and it's that way for a reason. We are putting so much of an investment upfront because we, the newest officer coming in from the academy off the street is probably one of the highest liabilities to the city with the amount of responsibility and authority they have. So we want to make sure we have the absolute best candidates and we don't want to leave any stone unturned. I went to North Dakota to do a background and I met with the mayor of that city and they were flabbergasted that, that I would travel that far to look at records. And I explained to the mayor, I'd flabbergasted that you wouldn't, knowing the liability that you're taking on. But that's one step we'll do to, just to make sure. The background also includes a fingerprint background, FBI background. We'll go out and talk to neighbors, school teachers, former coaches. We'll look at military records. We'll go out and talk to past employers, former girlfriends. They really get up in your business. So there's nothing that's, that's missed in these backgrounds. From, from the background or during the background, they could be, or they will be asked to take a polygraph to find if there's anything they're not disclosing to verify things we may have had questions about during the background process. Assuming they pass the polygraph, we could send them on to a psychological examination. And that's where psychologists will put them through a battery of tests that kind of gauge their aptitude towards the success in the career. And they grade these tests in a, like an A, B, C, D type of system. And then there's a complete medical exam. If anybody's familiar with the military, the military has a MEPS physical where they basically check you from top to bottom, inside and out. And the same is required for police applicants because we're looking at a large investment of money into them, just like a professional athlete. because we're looking at a a large investment of money into them, just like a professional athlete. Uh, we we don't want to take on a lame duck and then be responsible for them over the next twenty years. So we want to have people come in that are healthy and capable of doing um their job requirements. Uh, once the background investigation is completed, um they heard the final offer of employment, or they could be disqualified. Um, if they're disqualified, we we advise them and we remove them from the list. Um, if they are um successfully passed and they accept the final offer of employment, um then we need to um send them to the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. Um, it's this is the Police Academy. And the uh police will, they'll, the candidates will attend the Police Academy for about five months. And um, once they complete that, they'll go into a field training program. So I'll talk a little bit more about the Police Academy in a second. But I just want to point out that um we we hire for culture. Um, part of the interview process is we highly recommend that the candidates go out and do ride-alongs. Um, and with that's, that's twofold. One is so the candidate can see what they're getting into, they could see what Arlington is like if they're not from the area. And uh they get to see and interact with the officers, um because regardless of whether I like them or not, um I'm not working with them on a daily basis. So we want to find somebody that's a fit for the organization and it's a fit for the community. The other side is, um, we want to make sure that they're a fit for us. So um somewhat unbeknownst to them, and they're being evaluated. Um, the officers that they interact with will write memos um talking about their interaction, what their opinions and feelings about the direction was. So um it it is quite intensive, um and and we're looking for to hire the right people um for the right reasons. One additional note I made on here is that um out of our current officers that we have, sixty-four percent of our department right now of the officers on the road have college degrees. Um, there's also a percentage of people in college programs, and almost every officer on the department has some level of college training, has taken some college classes. So I'm very proud of the the fact that we we really do um try to hire people that invest in themselves. And we have a lot of people continuing education, that's part of our culture when they're here, is to continue that education. The next slide talks uh basically is kind of an overview to give you what what this background actually costs. The the slide speaks for itself, but that does not include the staff time. If we do the background um in internally, um there may be those travel costs plus the salary and wages of the the background investigator. But to give a a another overall picture, we're looking at about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar investment um before we start seeing a return on our investment. Um, and that's about the two-year mark. So you have a police academy that's five and a half months. Then they come back and they do their field training for, you know, another, you know, sixteen to twenty weeks. And then they're in probation from a year from the time they graduate from the academy. For that officer to actually start pulling their own weight and actually seeing a return on our investment, um we're about two-hundred-thousand dollars invested in there. And that's another reason why we put so much money um upfront into these candidates, because we're looking for career um people that want to make a career here and be a part of the community here. When I started twenty years ago, it was um Arlington was was not one of the the more respected departments. And a lot of people would get hired here with the intent of soon as they pass probation, they just wanted a stepping stone to get somewhere else they wanted to be. Um, and and what a turnaround um in in the last decade, that now people are seeking us out to to work here. So we don't want, we don't want to see that money walk out the door, you know, at two years because um we'd be losing money like crazy. The the process is so intense, um and and I don't apologize for it, I just want to be real about it, that we have about a fifty percent wash rate. And and I'm somewhat embarrassed to say that we have washed candidates for for legitimately good cause and seen them picked up at other agencies, and that's um scary to me. I, but I I won't back off of the standards that we use to hire people because we want to hire the best and we want to hire the right people. But by way of an example, and this is from two thousand sixteen, but this isn't too far off from where we are today. In two thousand sixteen, the mayor signed twelve conditional offers of employment. We had eighteen people go through background, and the reason for that was some of them were holdovers from two thousand fifteen. But by the time we got to the end of that eighteen, twelve people voluntarily had removed themselves. We hired, ended up hiring two, and out of the two, one person didn't complete their field training. So um you can see that is um very long time, it's a very long process, and it's 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 very hard to stay ahead of the curve when you have that much invested upfront. Speaking to the Law Enforcement Academy, like I said, it's about five and a half months, it's seven hundred and twenty hours, and it covers um the whole gamut of classes from criminal law and procedure to emergency vehicle operations um and and a whole lot of things, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But focusing on what we're talking about in today's culture, I thought it was important to to mention that part of that training is crisis intervention training. So the law out of uh two thousand seventeen requires that all officers receive eight hours of crisis intervention training um in the academy itself. And regardless of whether or not you were in the academy, you have to receive that training. So um there was no, nobody was grandfathered in. Everybody on our department has to maintain or has to continually get a minimum of two hours of crisis intervention training every single year. Um, so I thought that was one of the things that was timely to point out. Many of you might be familiar with uh initiative I nine forty. Um, that was became to be known as the Law Enforcement Training and Community Safety Act. Um, this law here started um you know, by the initiative process, um it was voted on um by the people and passed, and it included three main elements. One was um independent, independent investigations for um uses of force that result in um that resulted in death by by an independent investigation. I mean, something like our Snohomish Multiple Agency Response Team. Um, if you're the involved agency in an incident, you bring in uh outside investigators that are independent from your agency to investigate it. Interesting that a lot of this act was actually based on the Snohomish County. Um, and we've had that that team in Snohomish County for twenty years. So um it's nice to know that we were kind of the model for the state on that act. Another part of that training include or a part of that law included uh required first aid, that whenever there was a serious use of force of involved with police, um that they rendered first aid uh as soon as possible. And the the third part included the de-escalation and mental health training. So beginning December seventh, two thousand nineteen, all new general authority police officers must complete two hundred hours of initial violence de-escalation and mental health training while they're at the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. So that was pretty significant law for us. All peace officers certified in Washington before that law took effect, uh before December seventh, two thousand nineteen, and all lateral officers coming in from out of state must complete a minimum of forty hours of continuing de-escalation and mental health training every three years um after receiving their initial certification. So you can see that that's going to be an ongoing training. So if a guy graduates from the academy today, um within three years, he has to complete forty hours of ongoing training, and that is part of the law and be um built into the Police Academy. But how that's built into the Police Academy is um the crisis intervention tactics and de-escalation are spread throughout the Basic Law Enforcement Academy curriculum in nearly every and all aspect to include patrol response to crisis training. It's included in the mock scenes that they go through, criminal and patrol procedures, defensive tactics, and firearms training, all include components of this new law. Effective de-escalation requires not only effective patrol aspect uh tactics, but also knowledge of the human physiology and mental illness. All police officers in Washington are now receiving training in communication, implicit, explicit bias, alternatives to booking in jail, and the hor- uh historical intersection of race and policing and understanding local cultures. So despite the reforms that have happened over the last couple decades, um which demonstrate overall the 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 amazing professionalism and commitment officers have to their communities, today, we still need to be cognizant of how police officers had at times been on the wrong side of history. And we need to be sensitive to disconnecting historical experience from the contemporary sentiment. So I think that's um, it's really good that that is built into the academy. Continuing on the on the training theme, once they graduate from the academy, um that is not where the training stops. Oftentimes, I'll hear that um a hairstylist has more hours of training required than a than a police academy person. On paper, initially, it looks that way, but that's not taking into account the ongoing training and the field training um outside of the academy itself. When they graduate the academy, they get a certificate that allows them to um kind of practice law enforcement. But when they walk in the department, that training is going to continue um within another roughly sixteen to twenty weeks of intensive on-the-job training, um where they're given daily performance evaluations. And this training is conducted by um a field training officer, and it's overseen by a field training sergeant. So the day they graduate from the academy, also, they have one year probation. Um, and that um that probation um can be extended based upon um the field training program. That field training program can be extended as well. Some agencies use their field training program to weed out officers, um our potential um potential officers. Uh, we try to put so much upfront in our hiring that uh we will extend that training program if we think there's still hope that of of salvaging that officer. Not everybody works out despite the training. However, we're going to put as much as we can into making them successful before we give up on them. And then once you complete that one-year probation and you complete that training phase, the state law since two thousand six requires us to do a minimum of twenty-four hours of in-service training that we have to document. And um and that training is audited by the state as well, um to maintain our 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 peace officer certification. So I talked earlier about our policy and how we used to have this hodgepodge of policies that we in um inherited from multiple administrations. Um, it's it's somewhat funny in hindsight that um a lot of the policies that we were under, you could assign a name to them, oh, this was the Ventura policy because of something stupid Ventura did. And that's um, if you're from the private sector, you're probably familiar with that theory. Uh, that's how a policy is made, because somebody messed up and did something somewhere. But we we needed to get away from that model, and so we we started looking for what other agencies were using. And uh we came a- across Lexipol, and Lexical, Lexipol is a subscription-based policy. Um, and it provides a comprehensive uh state-specific policies developed by over three hundred um attorneys and professionals, law enforcement experts. They have regional attorneys assigned, so we can have the laws change on us literally on a daily basis. And um it's nice to know that somebody is monitoring that, that if we need to change our policy in compliance with a law or a new standard, um that somebody is looking out for us. It would be impossible for um the police department to replicate the legal review of thousands of pieces of legislation. Um, the policy development and the online policy management platform um that Lexipol provides us is great. It it helps us in a number of ways. It's it's relatively low cost, um and it ensures that we keep everything in compliance. Uh, it also um allows us to dedicate our resources to other things. The the loss of community trust and the financial costs of even a a single incident resulting from a bad policy far outweighs the ongoing cost of having a subscription. One of the things I like about this policy is that we get daily training bulletins provided from the subscription providers. Um, they come in the form of videos and emails. And this is an online system that is available to the officers um on their smartphones. So our policy manual is i- is up to close to six hundred pages. So um I wouldn't expect everybody to have every line memorized, but when we get into a complex situation, it's nice to know, and I've seen it done in the field, that a supervisor responding can pull up a specific policy, and it lays out a step-by-step approach of what they need to do um to ensure that they're following the policy and the state law. Um, the policies are are developed based on um federal standards, state standards, and then best practices. And the best practices are 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 set up by um by a number of different things, but they are supported by our insurance provider, which is WCIA. Um, they s- they support it so much that they actually give us a rebate back um every year by being um a member and subscribing to this policy. Another thing that it does, uh because it is an online-based policy, it 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 tracks um changes to the policy and it tracks the employee's acknowledgement of that policy, and it's all done electronically. So rather than keep track of thirty different emails to thirty different officers, hey, did you get this policy? Would you sign off on this? Or trying to run them down to get them to sign off on something, um they can do it electronically, and I can print out reports based on um when the policy changed, uh when the officer received training on it, and that they did sign off on it. Um, this has come up in lawsuits in the past where they wanted to, um it's been brought up legally that, oh, you know, can you prove that the officers received training in this area? And it's been nice to be able to go to the Lexipol and print out exactly when they um were trained, when they signed off on it, and provide that data. So we've been very, very happy with Lexipol. I know an area that's been very big with a lot of departments um across the country, and there's a very big social media push right now to talk about the eight can't wait. Um, and and eight can't wait is uh is a push by by a particular group that um based on a study that they conducted themselves. And the theory being that if they could get every agency, every police department to um agree to these eight policies, that they could reduce um violence or or police brutality by seventy-two percent. So I'm wanted to spend a minute just talking about and addressing it because it is a very um i- is very big on the social media. The eight areas that they recommend um in the policy are banning chokeholds, requiring de-escalation before the use of force, requiring warning shots, uh or require a warning before shooting, requiring exhausting all other means before shooting, include duty to intervene by other officers, restrict shooting at moving vehicles, um using a use-of-force continuum, and requiring comprehensive reporting. So when we did a review of all of our policies, uh we believe we're in compliance, um if that's the word I would use. But we're we're in agreement with the theory behind most of these um eight can't wait policies. When it comes to chokeholds, we do have a policy um that does not allow chokeholds. I I don't know any agency that's used a chokehold in in forty years. Requires de-escalation. Yes, we we do try to use de-escalation when whenever possible, and you can see that that's a big um part of our training um through the academy and then continuing on afterwards. Require a warning shot or a warning before shooting. Um, yes, we, it's part of our policy that a verbal warning should precede any use of of potential deadly force whenever possible. Uh, require exhausting all measures before shooting. Um, yes, where it's possible, um we definitely would only want to use the the force that was legally required to affect what we were trying to accomplish, which usually is an arrest. Include the duty to intervene by other officers, excuse me. Um, yes, that is um a policy specifically called out in our uh department, and I I'll talk about that in in a moment as well, that we we see that on a regular basis. Uh, restrict shooting at moving vehicles. Um, yes, our policy does restrict shooting at moving vehicles. We will only allow it if there is no other reasonable means necessary to avert the threat um to to a person. Requires the use-of-force continuum. We meet the standard, but the the wording chosen by the eight can't wait is a is a little misleading. Use-of-force continuum is older terminology that was um largely phased out um in the early two thousands. What we use is a a force options model. When the continuum models were developed, the courts provided little guidance on the use of force. Uh, continue models um are not based in law. The courts come out since that time and basically given strict guidelines on when and when things can and can't be used, and so we're more in line with the court on that matter. So I think it's more a matter of terminology um that we're talking about there. And require comprehensive reporting, um this is required by policy also. Um, we talk about a response to resistance, um and it's the same as saying a use of force. It's just different terminology, but our, anytime that we do intercede, um it does require a report, and we do track the But our anytime that we do intercede, it does require a report and we do track those reports for statistical purposes. And I'll have a slide towards the end about the use-of-force reporting. Wanted to quickly go over accountability. And I think that, as you can see through some of the areas that we've already covered, accountability covers a lot of different areas and we cover accountability in a lot of areas. It starts with recruitment and that is why we do such a thorough background. And that's why we have such high standards, because if we can avoid a problem before it happens, that is accountability. That's accountability to to our coworkers, it's accountability to the council, but it's accountability to the citizens. And we do, you know, rigorous testing. We do a rigorous background and that's all part of that accountability piece. We do an annual review where we we publish information in the annual reports. We do annual evaluations of our employees and we do mandatory training on a regular basis. And that all is part of the accountability piece. The Lexipol policy is accountability. Training daily to that policy is part of that accountability. Signing off on that training is part of the accountability. Some other areas that are that cover the accountability is we have to be cognizant of the collective bargaining agreement. And there's some requirements in there. We also report to the FBI all of our crime data. And we do that on a regular basis through the National Incident-Based Reporting System. So I should note that there's only forty-three percent of the nations of the law enforcement agencies in the nation reports to the FBI. So Arlington being a department of less than thirty officers, we're very, we're considered a small department. But we've but we've been reporting to the FBI for twenty years. So I think we're been ahead of that curve and we find it useful because that that data we provide comes back to us in statistics that we use to promote constructive discussion. We use it to measure our planning and we make informed policing decisions based on that data. So that's part of our accountability system. And then I mentioned before the annual reporting. I've been trying to put out a report since I became deputy chief every year that covers what's going on in the department. And we make that information public because that is all part of accountability. Also part of accountability is personnel complaints. And personnel complaints can come in internally or they can come in externally. I think it should be noted that on a yearly basis, we average less than a dozen complaints per year from from the citizens or from the community, which is pretty astounding to the work that our officers are doing. And truth be told, two-thirds of all of our complaints come internally versus externally. That is, we talked earlier about the eight can't wait, the the duty to report type of piece and that accountability. Like I said, most of our internal investigations are generated internally where somebody has a concern that we're not following a policy, we're not following a law, or there's opportunities to improve ourselves. So I think that's pretty significant, that the majority of our complaints come internally versus externally. But we do take we do take complaints internally and externally. They can be informal or they can be formal. We we'll take them in any way we can get them. Sometimes a complaint will come in through an official complaint form at the front office. Sometimes it'll come in through an email. It could come in through a telephone call or it could be just something in person. You're not required to fill out any documentation to make a complaint. You can do it verbally. It's great if they'll write it down, but if they don't, that's fine as well. So we have some ways that when we conduct an investigation, we will come to some kind of resolution and that resolution could be the complaint was unfounded or the person was exonerated. It could be not sustained or it can be sustained. And typically, what the result of that complaint, it could result in additional training for the officer or the team. It could result in an oral reprimand. It could result in a written reprimand. It could result into a suspension. It could result in a time off, you know, with without pay type of suspension. And ultimately, it could lead to a termination if it's significant enough. We can put somebody on administrative leave if the complaint is of a misconduct of a serious nature or if the circumstances indicate that allowing the accused person to continue to work would adversely affect the mission of the department. I work with HR and we may temporarily assign that person on to administrative leave. We also might reassign them to desk duty. Just depends on the situation, on the situation. Let's talk about the collective bargaining agreement. This is just talks about that when we initiate an investigation, you have thirty days from the time that we become aware of whatever the violation is to complete the investigation, unless the complexity of that investigation makes it impractical. And we have had some investigations that have been longer than thirty days and have passed because of the the magnitude or the nature. There are occasions where we might bring somebody in externally to do the complaints, depending on the nature of the complaint. And if we bring in an outside investigator to do that investigation, it might be difficult for them to complete it in thirty days. But we have an obligation under the collective bargaining agreement to keep the union representation advised of what's going on with the process. And then the last sentence of that collective bargaining agreement talks about what I mentioned before. They could be oral reprimand, written warning, loss of leave, suspension, discharge, whatever the appropriate action is. Our policy does cover the discipline policy. I think what's notable about this discipline policy is that unlike a lot of employers, our employees can be subject to the policy even when they're off duty. Because we are in such a public position and a public-facing position that the officers need to be cognizant of their actions outside of work and how they may reflect the public's trust. And where we see a lot of problems with this is in social media and things of that nature. I've seen a lot of officers across the region get in trouble for posting things on social media. And they're quick to come back and say, well, that's, I was off duty. This is my private thoughts and I'm entitled to freedom of speech. However, the the laws recently, court rulings, when it comes particularly to public safety employees, really have sided with the employer and that if you're working in a public position, you need to be held accountable. You could tarnish the the repres- the, sorry, you could tarnish the image of your employer. And you can lose public confidence and public trust. And that is would counter our mission, what we want to accomplish within the community and community policing. So we do have a policy that talks about discipline. And it also talks about progressive discipline. Nothing in the progressive discipline policy is intended to preclude the administration of more serious forms of discipline, such as termination for a first offense if it's warranted by the seriousness of the nature. But generally speaking, if it's a relatively minor violation, we 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 try to do progressive discipline with retraining and writ or verbal warnings. And then we progress up to written warnings and and things of that nature. I think that's pretty standard in a lot of places, but it's actually in our policy and we actually train to that policy. When I talked earlier about annual reports, part of that is the accountability piece. And that is trying to be transparent with the public on the things that we do. So one of the sections that I've included in the annual reports is our response to resistance and what some people might call the use of force. I refer to it as a response to resistance for the fact, and a lot of other agencies do this, for the fact that generally when an officer pulls up on the scene of a call, they generally don't jump out and just start shooting. It's it's something they're usually reacting to what the situation is. So referring to something as a use of force in itself is is a little bit cumbersome. They're usually responding to something and it's usually the resistance. The first year that we did the annual reports, I made a pie graph. And it's interesting, the the use the use-of-force data is so low, you barely could see it on a pie graph. So I tried to look for a way to expand that out to get a better picture on what we're actually doing. When you look at the two thousand and nineteen report, you'll see that, as we mentioned earlier, we had twenty-nine thousand incidents that we responded to. And out of the twenty-nine thousand incidents, there's fifty-seven where we documented some type of response to resistance or some type of use of force, which equates to less than one percent of the time. And like I said, when you look at those reports, you can break it down, whether it was pointing a firearm, using a taser, getting in, taking somebody to the ground like in a tackle or some kind of escort hold, those kind of things. We broke it out in a bar graph, so you can see what that looks like. But less than one percent is tells you that the majority of the time we're getting cooperation in in what we do. And we don't have any major concerns for the use of force within our department. But it is something we continually monitor. Since we're talking about the monitoring, I mentioned earlier the strategic plan. One of the elements of the strategic plan was to try to increase our professionalism in the documentation that we do of complaints and use of force. And something that we just acquired recently is a professional management, professional standards management software. And I included this in your packet if you wanted to look at it. We're using a company called IA Pro. It's similar to Lexipol, but their whole focus is IA, in police terms, usually means internal affairs. And that's the reference there. But IA Pro basically is a software that will provide for the tracking of officer behavior through data analysis that can produce various types of alerts if a problem exists. The software provides for an alert based on the type of incident and can be set to different thresholds for different types of incidents, such as citizen complaints and use-of-force incidents. The professional standards software also helps professional standards personnel with caseload management through reminders and actions that are required on the case that's approaching a status that's overdue. It'll produce reports and graphs and charts that can be generated by command staff for review by policymakers and strategic planning and policy analysis purposes. So we're in the process of, we've purchased the programs. There's going to be a an installation and a training portion. And we predict full implementation by the beginning of two thousand and twenty-one. This is going to be significant for us in largely in in public records disclosure, future planning, and those use-of-force reports. Right now, every use-of-force documentation is done on a single piece of paper and then tracked on an Excel spreadsheet. And it gets cumbersome to track and follow. And this data here, IA Pro will actually work with this other program called Blue Team that will allow our officers in the field using their smartphones to enter the data. A great feature of this is I will come into the office and I will find a use-of-force sheet in my mailbox. Once we go over to this program, it could be set up to send me alerts automatically when there is a use of force in the field. We could set the level of alerts. It could go straight to an IA department. It could go straight to the deputy chief or it could go straight to me. And the same with citizen complaints. So we can set up the software to track and do things we want. So I think we're doing a good job of of this now. However, it's been a long time coming, puts us more professional into going to software to start helping track this and for future planning. So I'm excited about that. It was on our strategic planning and I think it's just timely that we that now seems like as good a time as any with everything that's going on to to get that implemented sooner than later. This is a subscription-based program as well. And so, once we get it set up, have some time to determine if it's working for us and how we like it. There are a number of agencies around us that use it and recommend it. And it should free up some of my time and some of the deputy chief's time in the long run when personnel are kind of a at a premium. But with that, it's a lot of information. I'm sorry if I went too fast, but I wanted to leave time for questions.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the presentation. I hope the council did as well. A little bit of a chance. Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for Chief? Deborah and then Jan.
Hi. Jonathan, thank you. This is a lot of work, what you've done in putting this together for us. And the first thing I want to say is I really appreciate these different tools that you told us about, that you are either putting in place or have put in place. Because it assures me of your willingness and your department's willingness and also our staff. I think of Paul and and James. Anyway, to have transparency. So I so appreciate that. It I mean, I'm very confident in you and our team, our police force. But it just helps me to be even more confident during these times. Just a couple of questions. So the annual reports, I'm sorry, but I'm blind. And I was just curious, the third to the last, the highest bar, what is that? It says something, hold. I'm just curious to know what some of these things listed are. You don't need to list all of them, but maybe the the two highest bars.
Yeah, I I got to admit, I went to the eye doctor last week and they said I needed progressive, which is a nice way of saying trifocal.
Well, that's what I have and you can get back to me. You could send it to counsel. It's okay.
I suspect it's an arm bar hold is what I suspect it is. When we when we go hands-on to make an arrest, if people try to pull away from us, it's very, we use a lot of joint lock and manipulations, wrist holds and arm holds.
And I've I've seen that when I've gone on ride-along, so I I know.
I will send you an email before I go home to verify that. And I'm sorry, I didn't print it out big enough for myself. My my intent is, it is available online, so.
And then one question about with Lexipol is, as I've been trying to think through this and our police policy, and this was before your excellent presentation. And and I did read through some of our re-review the police policy or procedure manual. But I was thinking, you know, when I read things, I'm reading them as a white woman. That's my filter. And so I was just curious if in all those different attorneys and groups that work with Lexipol, can we be assured that there is a group representing people of color as they review these policies?
Oh, I will I will say that I've been to some of the Lexipol trainings and they have a diverse work group of attorneys and and experts. Additionally, what they do is they work with a lot of the state training agencies. And so, when I mentioned Balia earlier, that's the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. Part of that Law Enforcement Safety Act was to include community representation in the policymaking and the rulemaking. And so we know that there's persons of color and and different groups with community on that group. And what Lexipol does is they also work with those agencies, with those boards to participate in some of that planning and policy. I can't specifically say they're on Washington State's board, but I know that they're on many other states as well. And so I know regionally, I I'm very confident that they're doing exactly what you're asking to do. I will also say, we get these daily training bulletins and we get videos almost on a weekly basis from Lexipol. And they do cover a lot of implicit, explicit bias and type of things on there. So I I'm very confident that's incorporated into the training.
Thank you.
No doubt.
And then just one other question is the de-escalation and mental health training that is required now as of December of last year. So we're only six months into that being a requirement. But I was just curious if any of our officers are signed up for it, have begun any of it or?
Every everybody that graduates the academy has to go through it. And and to be honest, the people that have gone through the academy prior to would have gone through much of it as well. It's it's not that the training didn't exist before, but what they had to do was really go back and look at their curriculum and identify specific areas that had been covered that weren't specifically called out. So to answer your question, everybody who's graduated in the last two years or so So to answer your question, everybody who's graduated in the last two years or so has, basically has it. And then we have half a dozen officers that have gone through the forty-hour curriculum, and that we all will be going through that curriculum within the next few years, and forty hours within every three years. So we were underway. The only agency in the state that has put the entire department through the forty hours is Everett. And I wish we had the same training capacity that they do. But we're well within the state guidelines and we're working towards that requirement. So we are meeting the mates, and we're actually ahead of a lot of other places. We have, we actually have two state-certified instructors. And the reason I authorized these two people to become state instructors was so they could bring that training in-house, so we don't have to wait for the training to come to us. We can start doing the training ourselves, and as soon as we get past the COVID, we'll be seeing a lot more of that.
Smart. Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, Deborah. Jan, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, Jonathan, thank you. That was exceptional. I was so impressed. I knew that you had done a lot of things, and we had things in place since you came on board. So I was feeling really pretty good, and you brought out even more, so I really, really appreciate it. What it has done for the council is it has given us so much information that we can tell our citizens when they ask, because as you know, this is nationwide right now. So I have kind of an odd question. One of the things that we've seen so much of on TV with everything going on, and all of the police officers, and depending on what city it is, they are, I don't know how to say it, but they're armed to the teeth. And they've got so much gear on that it scares people. And I know I've had people ask me, and our police officers are definitely not as geared up as what we're seeing on TV. I know when I was out on the ride-around, I did ask how much it weighed with everything they were wearing, and I think they said forty pounds. Could you just briefly tell us what kind of things that our police officers are wearing all the time?
Sure. To answer the question regarding what you're seeing on TV, you're seeing officers that are in full riot gear. And we would not put on, we have riot gear available to us on a certain amount. And when we were doing our, when we were doing the protest in town a few weeks ago, that gear was available to us. But we don't, we wouldn't want to start out showing up in riot gear unless we were prepared to defend a position. And the reason you see the officers in that gear is because they're actually getting bricks thrown at them. They're getting frozen water bottles and frozen urine bottles thrown at them. And more recently, it's been scary that they're shooting mortar rounds, like you see. You know, the Fourth of July, most people know that you drop a ball in, you light it, and it shoots up in the air. That's a very high explosive mortar rounds. They're now taking those and shooting them into police cars, which those are heavy explosives that could kill people. So when you're looking at Seattle and you see a line of officers dressed in that fashion, they're not dressed in there because they want to be dressed like that. They're dressed in that for their own protection, and they have reason to believe that there's going to be some violence used against them. So just to be clear, we have some of that equipment available to us, but we're not going to see those type of circumstances in Arlington very often if found at all. But to answer your other question, if you can see the camera view, our officers carry an external vest. And why they went to these external vests was, all of this equipment that you see here used to be carried on the hips with the exception of the vest. When you put roughly thirty-plus pounds, when you put thirty pounds on your hip, in the long term, it gives you back problems. Also, when the officers are in the office typing reports, it's very nice to get some breath to take this off and set it down and then catch a breath. But generally, what you're seeing the typical officer wear is you're going to see a tourniquet. That's a lifesaving for themselves or for somebody else that may need it. A package of Narcan, that could be to reverse the effects of opioids. Again, that could be for themselves, their partners, or for a community member. Handcuffs, a cell phone holder, this is an ammunition magazine for a pistol, flashlight, radio, and then the other thing you might see is a taser. So those are typically what you're going to, those are the basic forms of law enforcement. You might also see pepper spray on an officer's pouch. I don't have one on here. I'm not out of the office as much as I used to be, but typically, that's what you see. Does that answer the question?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And that answered my questions.
Yeah, what's important at Jonathan's point now is we've actually shifted how the officers carry their gear. And so it looks different, and I've heard it from citizens too. It looks different, but it's safety and physical safety for their bodies as an easier way to carry it. Thanks.
Oh, yeah, I totally understand.
They're issued ballistic helmets, and there's other levels of protection they can add. But we don't drive around with ballistic helmets on or carrying rifles. There are tools that we deploy based on what we're doing, but we don't typically drive around with that stuff.
Okay, real good. Thank you so much.
So go to Councilmember Hobson.
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to focus on what's been in the news over the last several weeks. I'm sure everyone's very aware of it. And it largely hinges on the use of deadly force and the accountability in using deadly force. And so I have a question I just want to pose to you. If a police review board has found that an employee has violated deadly force policy, what specific disciplinary action is taken and by whom?
Well, what we would do is we would work with the HR department if there's a violation of policy. And then, you know, based on the level of violation, it's hard specifically to answer your question, because there could be a lot of nuances to any scenario. But if there's adverse employment action, it's usually taken by the mayor ultimately based on the recommendation that I would propose. And I would work probably directly with something of a serious nature of that. That type of serious nature, I work pretty frequently with HR to make sure we're honoring the collective bargaining agreement, that we are following policy. But we would write up a report, we'd do an investigation, and then submit those findings to HR. We pretty frequently will reach out to outside legal for employment law.
Same thing too. A lot of times we have relationships where there'll be an external investigation. We would still conduct an internal investigation in terms of the specific disciplinary investigation that we would utilize to make that decision in terms of penalizing someone either with a written reprimand, you know, oral warning, suspension, termination, or forfeiture of leave in accord with the collective bargaining agreement provisions.
Well, of course, I'm talking about the breaking of the policy for deadly force. Not, not worthy of a reprimand. This is the ultimate seriousness, serious violation of policy. And that's what I'm trying to drive at, is if you get to that level, that point, you know, what happens?
So usually, if something is so serious that it merits kind of skipping over those progressive steps of discipline, you would take action to terminate someone's employment if you had sustained findings in an investigation that showed that they violated that type of policy. But generally speaking, that's going to be done after there's been an objective investigation and an determination made that they did violate policy. Then that gets kind of reviewed by the mayor in terms of making that final determination, or she's delegated that authority to the city administrator.
So this is then, it ends up being discretionary is what I'm hearing. Whether it's the mayor, according to your side, but it would be at her discretion as to then what would take place. Is that what I'm hearing? Am I hearing that correctly?
In our form of city government, the mayor is in charge of the executive branch, and so is viewed with that authority. And then can delegate that to the city administrator if she so desires. Same thing with hiring, hiring too.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd just like to add on to that. Something of that nature, the liability to the city. In my experience in working with the mayor and the executive branches, the city, in my experience, has always tried to limit the liability where they could. So it wouldn't make sense to have a situation that would be worthy of termination, and then to ignore such, I think would create a huge liability to the city. And I haven't seen that in my experience, in my time being here. It would be, we would have plenty of legal advice at that time, and if it was recommended for termination, I'd be hard-pressed to think of why we would keep that person around.
We've worked so hard to change the culture of the police department at the chief's leadership. So I'm very proud of the culture and the professionalism we have in this department today, which I think is a hundred-and-eighty-degree turn from the way the department was in the past. And I take that very seriously, and I take very much honor the work the chief has done to get us there. And part of that is the accountability, is having standards, is having, you know, those requirements of our staff to work with the community to build that trust. And so I just want you to know, those things are very much at the top of my priority list that we keep going in a way that continually adds improvement to our department, but doesn't move us backwards from where we are.
Yeah, I'm mostly concerned about that there be very clear guidance, that everybody knows what would happen if police officers, and I know it's very, very rare. I'm not saying it's rampant or anything, not even close. But nationwide, there does seem to be kind of a pattern that has been occurring over the past several years now that seems like, when I look, when I hear about the details of the case, you get an officer, and I know it's a very small percentage, but they're there, that really shouldn't be there. And there have been, from what I understand, there have been indications in that officer's record that indicates a proclivity to misuse deadly force. And it would be really helpful, would save lives frankly, if we could see that coming and nip that in the bud, so to speak, so that we don't end up in a situation where there's a loss of life. And that's kind of what I'm driving at here.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you, and I think that was part of what we wanted to show you tonight in the presentation. One, the intense scrutiny and process of hiring the police officers to begin with, the work that goes in making sure they fit in the culture, and then the reporting that they do internally to the chief.
If I could jump in real quick, I would just like to follow that up with, I know the president just signed, I believe it was last week, signed an executive order, and one of the mandates in that order was proposing the establishment of a national database for police abuses and things of that nature. And I would totally support that. It would help me with our backgrounds. Like the mayor said, we put so much into the background screening for those things, and some of those records that might be able to hide that is why we go out in person to look at those records. Because James will tell you that not everything in an employee's discipline file is, can be shared with other agencies. But when I show up in person with a waiver, I can oftentimes look at those files, even if I can't photocopy them. I'm allowed to look at them, and I can take notes. So if there was a national database set up of, I'll just call it a bad cop database, I would totally support that. And I believe everybody in our agency would support that as well. Nobody, trust me, you probably heard it said, but nobody wants to get rid of the bad cops more than the good cops.
Exactly. It protects, it protects the police department as a whole if you can weed out the bad cops.
Agreed.
Don, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, one of the things, Mike, I agree where you're coming from with this, Mike. But one of the things, like Chief Insure said, some of the tools that he's looking at will help watch for those loopholes, the bad apples that are popping in. That like the IA Pro, from what I read about that, Jonathan, it looks like you put data in there, and all of a sudden, somebody starts seeing a pattern, it puts out a flag. So, and I think, I don't think we have any bad apples in our department whatsoever. Everybody, I feel, is very truly committed to our community and stuff, and honorable officers. But like I say, these tools that Jonathan is looking at bringing in will basically help us watch and throw up the red flags if there is any.
And that information is, you know, the software and the stuff that Chief Insure is looking at right now, will make it most definitely a lot easier to track that. But it is something that we have tracked and look at, you know, in the past and currently. It'll just assist with it. But you're absolutely right, you know. We can look at patterns and see if an officer maybe is having some issues or something that we can work with them before it becomes a liability to the city. However, at much lower level than what I think Mike was talking about, those, anything that poses a liability to the city is taken very seriously. And it's not only investigated internally, but in a lot of cases, we do it externally. And like James mentioned, we use outside legal counsel to help us so that we follow the employment laws and we're able to take care of those kinds of problems. Before they become serious. So it does, it does happen and has happened in the past.
I think one of the things that maybe was missed is the nuance is, you know, our police department here at the city is like family. They work for us, they work with us, and we get to know them very well. And I would tell you, as being in the executive branch, my concern for employees that we send out there to do the really tough stuff all of the time, you know, to always be in stressful situations, is we want to make sure that they have a way of retaining their wholeness as a person through that process. So we are always on the lookout, you know, if somebody's having some challenges somewhere, the first thing I would do is reach out to the chief, and we would offer some employee assistance to that person. I mean, what can we do to help relieve that stress or keep things from coming to a crisis stage? Like, we're going to, we've invested so much in hiring them and training them. We're going to invest in them as people too, who work for us and keep our community safe.
And we have increased our employee assistance benefit plan this year because our medical program costs came in lower than anticipated with its last year's budget. And I think many people in the department feel comfortable being able to come in and access those types of services. I know the chief fields calls, I field calls in HR for people saying, you know, I've got this particular issue going on, whether that's part of their job duties or part of their personal life. And we work very, very hard to make sure that they get the services that they need to make sure that they're fully available to do the right thing and follow the policies when they're in field.
Michelle?
I just, for me, this presentation was such an inspiring overview and summary of what's happened in the past and the direction that you're going and the direction that you want to go, and how the community seems to be the priority in everything that you do and everything that you plan. So when I, when I read this, and then I heard you do the presentation, for our community that our council is part of, it makes me really proud of the steps that you've taken and the steps that you continue to take just to ensure, you know, your team member's safety. And then the safety of our community, I was looking at the response time, and I thought, gosh, that's such a quick response. If I ever needed anything in an emergency situation, I'd be really grateful for all the work you've done around that and so many other pieces of the department. So thank you for providing this educational piece. And it does make me real proud of what you and your team is doing every day out there. So thank you.
Thank you. I will say this, I've taken, I've learned a lot from the council, and I'm not trying to suck up here. But one thing that I'm very proud about our council is, when you look at Arlington as the community that we are, we are a small town and a close community, but the council is involved on a regional level. And that has really inspired me, that when I was putting this together, looking back, I'm like, we went to the White House, we have an appointment from the State Supreme Court, we work on juvenile justice initiatives. We are, at the police department, we have modeled what you've done as a council, and we are very regionally involved. And for a small agency, that's, it's amazing. And I didn't realize how much we had done until putting this together, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? I just want to say one thing, Chief. My favorite part of you doing presentations like this is how it makes you sit down and take a look back and measure the progress. It's not something, I think, in your humble nature, that's always It's not something, I think, in your humble nature, that's all, you're always looking for the next area of improvement. And it's always pleasing to me to see you reflect on how much accomplishment and the kind of leadership you brought to this department.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Any other questions for the chief before we let him go, send off his emails for the night? So there's one more piece of business on here this evening. Maybe you want to stay for this part, Chief. As I put together a resolution of support, there's a lot going on in our country right now. And it's it's really been a challenging year, 2020, facing the pandemic and then facing civil unrest and looking at coming to grips and having to have open and sometimes uncomfortable conversations about social justice and inequities that exist in our country. They exist in our community too. I hope that you're all taking time to engage in some of the conversations and the trainings that we're working with in the school district on that. But one of the areas in talking to a lot of leaders from a lot of different communities in the last month that that I'm really proud of where Arlington is at on is in our intentional shift to the community policing. That intentional intentionality of building trust with the community so that we can provide a safer community where we can and bringing in the tools that help our officers do that job where they may not well be trained. So based on that, I put together a resolution in support of what I think is an awesome police department that represents our town very well and our values very well, that I hope the council will consider passing this evening. So I'll briefly read it. Whereas the City Council of the City of Arlington recognizes the need for effective and professional law enforcement services for Arlington to enhance and protect the quality of life for all citizens. And whereas in 2015, the City of Arlington Police Department fully embraced a community policing model and thereafter adopted policies to modernize the police department. And these policies can be found on the City of Arlington's website. These policies specifically identify policing practices to be used in an effort to keep citizens and officers safe. And the department continues to strive to adopt and utilize new best practices and technology as they evolve over time. And whereas the Arlington Police Department recognizes that the foundation for a culture of professional law enforcement service that is respected by the community consists of rigorous hiring standards and exceptional training, meeting or exceeding best practices and research-based standards, both of which are accomplished and continually strive for by the Arlington Police Department. And whereas the Arlington Police Department's community-based policing model fully embraces the role of community and building trust and the relationships with our community from our schools to our senior centers, to our businesses and our neighborhoods. And whereas the City Council of the City of Arlington recognizes and supports the Arlington Police Department's continuing pursuit of innovative practices such as utilizing a co-deployed embedded social worker team, domestic violence coordinator, use of crisis intervention training, implicit bias training and social interaction training. And whereas we acknowledge and appreciate the brave men and women who work to keep us safe, that they often must make split second decisions that could save a life and therefore they deserve our praise, our support. And whereas we believe law enforcement is essential to maintaining the rights and dignity of all members of our community. And we firmly support our Arlington Police Department personnel who put their lives at risk every day to protect, serve and participate as an integrated part of the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Arlington on behalf of the citizens and the City Council of the City of Arlington do hereby proclaim our sincere appreciation for and continued support for the City of Arlington Police Department, its officers and support staff and acknowledge the hard work and diligence of these individuals is deeply appreciated by this council and the citizens we represent.
Thank you. That's excellent, Barb.
Great. I'm hoping the council will agree and pass it this evening.
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I yeah, I definitely am.
Is that a motion, Deborah?
Yes. Go, Deborah.
So let me find, okay, so I will move to approve the resolution in support of Arlington Police Department personnel and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Second. Austin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chief, please take back to your personnel our deepest respect and support for the work they do.
Yes, please.
Thank you. All right, Paul, do we have any administrative report this evening?
Nothing else this evening.
Any comments from the council?
Could I make just one comment? Barb, I'll be real quick. Last Thursday at Community Transit, our CEO Emmett Heath, who is also a resident of Arlington, by the way, turned in his retirement. And I have to tell you, that hit me really, really hard. He has, the things he's done in the last six years has been incredible for Community Transit. I'm going to be really, really sorry. He's retiring to spend more time with his family, but anyway, I thought I'd pass that along. I'm sure it'll be in the paper shortly.
It's in the paper this weekend, actually.
He sent a, he sent a letter today to us, an email.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Jan. Yeah, he's a good man.
He served well. Any other comments from the council this evening?
With all this downtime with COVID nineteen, I achieved my certificate of municipal leadership.
Awesome. Congratulations. Great.
No mayor's report?
Oh, just a brief one, and I haven't received the EOC report formally to send out to you guys today. But you've probably all been hearing the news and we're not close to entering phase three yet. And there was quite a surge over the weekend of new numbers and new cases. And I know that we're all tired of this and we're all tired of the stay home and stay safe. And we want to go out and do the things, but I'm just imploring us to act like leaders for our community because we're not even going to get back close to where we used to enjoy cherished events like the Fourth of July again. If we don't do what, everything we personally can to ensure that we're bringing the spread down in our own community.
Thank you.
Okay, now a mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night all.
Good night.